Okay, we're going to get started. And the meeting is going to start off a little slowly as we have to have a reorganization. First, we'll have the town clerk is going to swear me in. And then we'll come back here and we will reorganize the board. I'd like to recognize the joining us tonight is State Rep. William Galvin. Representative, thank you for joining us tonight. Representative has been here for the town of Stoughton and he knows our town. And he represents us very well at the State House, continues to do an excellent job. So, thank you, Representative, for everything you do for the people of Stoughton. Thank you. So with that, if I can ask the town clerk to come forward.
Mr. McCrisky, if you could raise your right hand and give out to me the standing by, state your name.
I'm Joseph McCrisky.
Just solemnly swear.
Just solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully and faithfully.
That I will faithfully and faithfully.
Perform the duties of select board.
Perform the duties of select board.
According to the terms of the town charter.
According to the terms of the town charter.
High laws of the town of Stoughton.
High laws of the town of Stoughton.
And the general laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
The general laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
Congratulations.
That was nice.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Don't forget to open us up.
Yeah, no, Debra's going to do all that.
I'm just going to, before I recognize the town manager for the reorganization, is, you know, things in 30 years, really, when you look back, and it's my 30th anniversary being associated with this board when I was first elected in 1992. And there's been a heck of a lot of things that have happened over 30 years, some good, some tragic, both in my family and in my town family, as we call it. Dr. Grimm has been a unique opportunity to work with. I've worked with a lot of town managers and I think that gives me a little bit more experience than others to say that you've knocked it out of the ballpark for the people of Stoughton. It's fun, we can argue, we can disagree about the issue, but remain friends. And that means a lot to me. Mr. Carrara has been a friend of mine since we were 12. And believe me, we argue. Boy, do we ever argue. And I don't know who's going to throw who out a window first at times. But Scott, you're always there. You're rock solid. You care about the town, you know, and you put 100% forward. And it's been a pleasure serving with you over the years as well. Mr. Cavey is my brother from another mother. And I would say that Mr. Cavey is the one that we've gone through some battles. When I ran three years ago, Mr. Cavey campaigned for my opponent. And it was funny, to say the least, it was funny. We got here and we started working and, boy, we were firing on all cylinders together. And it goes to show that somebody that you don't agree with can end up being your best friend. And Mr. Cavey, you've always been there. You've been rock solid as well. You supported me, voted for me for chair when some people called you, lied about my record and so forth, but you did what you thought was right. And I'll never forget you for that. I thank you. Ms. Roberts.
Mr. Chairman.
Good luck.[378.62][378.62](laughing) Ms. Roberts has come on the board two years ago. And again, when you have people that know the local politics, and Representative Galvin and I were just talking about the local politics, Tip O'Neill had it right. Now, all politics is local. And it all comes back to Town Hall and what goes on in, you know, the supermarkets and the coffee shops and so forth. So when we started working with Roberts and Mr. Cavey, it was just two people, three people altogether, that really agreed on the issues. And it's been fun. You know, people will point to a three to two vote, but it's three people that agree on a lot of issues. And I've been very proud to serve with you. I'm looking forward to serving with you for the next three years because I'm pretty sure you can get elected next year. And I will be there holding the sign for you. Mr. Gito, we're serving as well, again, for, I think, the third time together in this term, a couple of times back in, I believe it was the late 90s and early 2000s. And Mr. Gito and I disagree on some things, but we've always remained friendly. Mr. Gito has contributed a lot to his town, more than my 30 years. I think you've got me beat by a few between town meeting and vote of selectmen. So it is a pleasure to serve with you, although we may not agree on everything. I know that we both agree that we love this town and we're doing whatever we can to make a difference for the town. And then we go with Ms. LeBlanc sitting over there. She thinks that she was going to get away with it. Yeah, I should have seen her eyes just pop up from her piece of paper. She thinks she's going to get away with it. And again, in 30 years, you get to serve with people that are the assistant to the select board and responsible for all the paperwork that comes out and getting things here, you know, on time and factual. And there's only one person that's been in that seat that I think, you know, would be equal to you. And thank you for the job you've done. You babysat me, you know, every time that the agenda wasn't, you know, done right away yet and it had to be out. Deb was like, well, we got about 20 minutes for it to be ready. So I thank you for all that. It's been a pleasure working with you. So it's been, a lot of things have happened, you know, personally. And I think one of my most proud moments is my son Brian's with me. He's in other ones, you say, oh, boy, what's he saying now? But 30 years ago, when I was elected in 1992, he was born. And I look back, I had a picture of him one year sitting in this seat with the name tag and he must have been 12 years old. My family has been rock solid. And my mother's here with me, Elaine Lindolfi, my mother. And I say, it's okay to be a mama's boy. My mother is my queen. You know, my mother raised us and a lot of families have gone through, we didn't have a lot, but we always had love. My mother treated us like we were the center of her earth and she is mine today. So, Mom, thanks for being there, except for her little labels, and only she knows what that means. All right? My son Brian, you know, a member of the Stoughton Police Department, every time I look at him, I can't believe that that's my son. And I shouldn't be that old, you know? I mean, it's just something else. But I say that we have a closeness that I hope every father can have with their son, that he is the center of my world. And, you know, I couldn't, I need to hear his voice, just to call and just to hear his voice. And if anybody could ever make a dad as proud as my son has made me over the years, I'm glad this year is lucky as well. And then Maria. What do I say about Maria? And she's wondering. Maria and I met about 10 years ago, following my divorce. And I came alive. I came alive. You know, we do things that I feel like I'm a kid, you know, having fun. And she's another one. She supports all this crap that I do and meetings at night and weekends and, but Maria, I love you. I said, it really, and you've made a difference in my life, you know, and I look forward to getting much older with you, you know? But she doesn't get gray, I do, you know? So with that, I thank you for bearing with me for a couple of minutes. So right now, as we, I'm going to ask the town manager to take over this portion and entertain motions for reorganization.
Thank you, Chairman McCrisky. And I would like to thank you for your service and your services, Chair, particularly during my tenure. You've been tremendous to work with as a Chair. You've really encouraged my staff in a way that they needed that encouragement support. And I think that when it comes from a board and from a chairman of a board, the way it has, I get better productivity out of my team. And that's what I saw happen. So I thank you and the people of Stoughton are better for it.
My pleasure.
So, thank you very much. And at this point, I would entertain motions, I would entertain nominations for select board Chair.
Actually, Madam Chair, town manager, why don't we open the meeting so that this is all recorded?
Show move.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Gito. Motion made and seconded to open the meeting, all in favor. Mr. Carrara?
Yes.
Mr. Cavey?
Yes.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Gito?
Yes.
And Chair votes in favor. So I will open the meeting by reading. Won't read anything yet. There you have somewhere. Didn't have these 30 years ago, I can tell you that. And I had dark hair, but. In accordance with, this is for the select board agenda, April 12, 7:30 PM, Great Hall at Town Hall. In accordance with Governor Baker's declaration of June 16, 2021, granting certain pandemic-related authorization related to public board and town meetings, and recently extended until July 15, 2022, this meeting will be conducted both in person and virtually via Google meets. And the address is there. This meeting may be recorded on SMAC cable television and broadcast live and may be livestreamed at www.stoughtontv.org. A recording of the meeting, transcript, and other comprehensive record of the proceeding will be posted on the town's website and/or SMAC as soon as practicable after the meeting if the live broadcast or live streaming is unsuccessful. Times are approximate and items may be taken out of the order at the chairman's discretion. So with that, on the vote, the nomination, the motion to open the meeting, Mr. Carrara?
We've done that.
Yes. Mr. Cavey?
Yes.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Gito?
Yes.
Thank, I just want to get that recorded. All right, so with that, Madam Town Manager.
Thank you. And I will accept nominations for Chair of the Select Board.
Madam Town Manager, I would like to nominate Debra Roberts.
Is there a second for that nomination?
You don't have a second.
Oh, actually, we don't have a second. Is there another nominee? I should say, are there any other nominations on the floor?
Yes, I, not taking anything away from the nomination, I would like to recognize Scott Carrara's deep knowledge of the town of Stoughton and his long service to the town by putting his name in nomination as well.
So we have two nominations for Chair. Would we want to do a roll call vote on it the most appropriate way?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Carrara for Vice Chair Roberts to serve as Chair?
No.
Mr. Cavey?
Yes.
Mr. McCrisky?
Yes.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Gito?
No.
We have a 3-0 vote for Vice Chair Roberts to serve as Chair.
Could we, could we have a revote now?
Sure.
To sort of, by acclamation or something, if we wanted to do that, to vote? I would vote. I'm happy that you're Chair. I guess I don't know how to do that if, the way we did it.
Would you, would you, would we like to take a reconsideration of that vote? The motion to reconsider that?
No, the vote, the vote should be counted, it's a vote.
The vote stands.
Yeah, I don't think we, I understand where Mr. Gito is going with. The vote is very clear.
Okay.
I don't think we need an acclamation vote.
Okay.
So the nomination of Vice Chair Roberts to Chair Roberts passes on a 3-2 vote. Congratulations, Chair Roberts.[883.82][883.82](applause)
And as Mr. Cavey just mentioned, this is a historic moment in the town of Stoughton, the first woman of color to serve as the Chair of the Select Board, which is the first. So congratulations. You have a lot of, a lot of work to do and I'll be here for you 24/7, just a phone call away. So with that, let's just make a quick changeover.
And the first person of color, male or female, by the way.
Actually, hold on one second, let me see if I can get this light to work for you. Voila.
Oh, thank you.
No, when we moved this all around, the light didn't get plugged in. Wow, for years, sat on a post between my legs, this is great.
Thank you so much, everyone. I am honored to serve. Takes my breath away. Thank you so much. Before we move on with our agenda today, I would like to have you stand and salute our flag by, with the Pledge of Allegiance, please, if you can do so.
(inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It looks like we have a hefty agenda. Oh, yes.
Vice Chair?
Oh. Sorry. I would, any?
Opening up nominations.
I would like to open nominations for Vice Chair. And I would like to nominate Mr. Cavey.
Thank you.
Or are there any other nominations? All right.
Will the nominations be closed?
I vote that the nomination, or is there a motion that the nominations be closed?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Right. On the vote.
Mr. Gito?
Yes.
I always want to call you Mr. Chairman.[1104.44][1104.44](laughing)
Well, you can, I mean, you can do the work, I'll take the title.
Okay, Mr. McCrisky, okay, we're moving along a little faster. Mr. Cavey?
Yes.
And Mr. Carrara?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Welcome.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.[1123.13][1123.13](applause)
All right. Senator Galvin, would you like to say a few words? I know you're not on the agenda, but we would appreciate it if you would.
I'm sorry to interrupt your agenda. First, I'd like to congratulate Joe on his reelection.
Thank you.
And I'd like to congratulate you, Debra, on this historic night. And I came tonight to let you know that tomorrow, the House is releasing its budget. And if you have any concerns, we'd like to know because all amendments will be due by Friday night at 5:00. So if there's any concerns, just reach out to me and we'll work on them. And it's a pleasure to represent the town of Stoughton, always has, and always will. So I'm here, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer it. I know you have a long agenda, so I'll be happy to. I'm going to sit down now if I have any questions.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so very much. Oh, that was a surprise. Thank you so very much. Okay, let's move forward with our agenda, please. Next on our agenda is citizens' request. Are there any citizens requesting comments? I see none. Okay, moving right along. Select Board comments. And I will start with my left Mr. Gito. Mr. Carrara? Mr. Carrara, sorry, doing end to end this time.
I just have two items. One, I want to thank the town manager for the mirror. It's up. I don't know if anybody looks at it, I know I do. It's on School Street at the end of Cushing so that you can see the traffic coming from Pearl Street doing 100. I do have another item that, the dumpster slamming is back behind there. And they've, they don't know which business it is, but they've narrowed it down to between 2:00 and 4:00 PM, I mean, 2:00 and 4:00 AM.
Okay. Are we talking over on Washington?
Yeah. So if there's a way we can look at that, I might have to spend a night and see which truck it is, but.
I'm trying to think, how far will we talk?
It's between Burger King and Albert's Plaza, some, it's, yeah, it's, it's just the three businesses there. Kentucky Fried Chicken and, yeah, I appreciate it. I will bring some information at the next meeting on the trash break for the 80 people. I've kind of got it down to what, what it's, where we can possibly get the money and how to generate some. And then maybe we can use some free cash, if we have some, to do it. I don't expect every 80-year-old to jump on because, as the town manager says, you can't have it in a realty trust, same as the water break. So you're probably, you're going to lose half right out of the, right out of the gate. So, and then the other few will be proud and they won't come and ask for the break, but I hope they do. So I'll bring the information to the next meeting and I'll have two things that night to talk about. Doesn't mean we have to jump on them right then and there, we'll, we can talk about them and see, but it's two things that I've been working on and it's, and it's time for it to happen. Thank you.
Mr. Carrara, would you like those as agenda items for our next meeting?
No, I'll just bring them up under the Select Board comments. And then when we get into the meat of it and get input from Dr. Grimm's side or whatever on certain things, then we can bring it forth and possibly do that.
All righty. Anything else, Mr. Carrara?
That's it, thanks.
Oh, great. Mr. McCrisky, any comments?
No, thank you.
All right. Mr. Cavey?
Yeah, so I just have ones that have comments. This was related to our last meeting where we had, as part of the meeting, we had discussed a town manager review. The first thing I would like to say is that I'd like to withdraw all of the work that I did with regard to the review. I don't think it was, it was fair. I don't think it really reflected really the excellence of this past year's accomplishments by the town managers, even though it's only been, actually, sorry, six months, it was a mid-year. You can't spearhead getting a fire station into the town after 100 years, you know, 30 years of kicking the can around. You can't succeed in that. You can't bring in, have the first year that I remember, having a budget that was, where we actually didn't, weren't asking for as much as we possibly could, right from, where we were able to live with, well within our means and have all the programs that we want included in that. You can't succeed in those areas and then, you know, end up as, you know, adequate. I just, I, when that happens, you just know that the metrics were not right. And so I feel like I take responsibility for that. I think that, you know, it was involved in putting this, that, those reviews together. I just don't think that they at all represent really the excellence of your work, the excellence of your character, and the contribution you have had repeatedly through, in this town. So I do ask that we either pursue some other way of doing this, or I will simply write up a review and that will be my review. But what we did, I don't think was successful and I don't stand behind it. And I don't want it to represent my opinion and I don't think it represents at all the quality of our town manager. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cavey. And Mr. McCrisky, did you have some comment?
I just wanted to respond to Selectman Cavey, Vice Chair Cavey, and say the same thing. If you all recall, during several meetings that we had, I mentioned that I thought we were watering these things down and the evaluation was based on things that the town manager had already achieved. And I think that that evaluation, the way it was performed, we as a board dropped the ball. I don't think that it was at all reflective of the job that the town manager has done to provide leadership for the town of Stoughton. It was no easy task when this select board voted to have the town manager, her staff, think outside the box and to come up with a plan for our fire station. And the years of talking that we did, our staff did what we couldn't do through committees and through multiple, multiple selectmen boards and select boards. And came up with a plan that was affordable and under a year, under a year, we didn't spend a penny in consult, I shouldn't say, very minimal on the consultants that were there just to go over what they had done. And that that plan was developed by staff, a funding source found, went to town meeting, was voted by town meeting, went to an override, was voted by the residents, and under a year we got done a fire station that couldn't get done, that Mr. Gito remembers well, that was talked about diligently since we lost firefighter Victor Malindi in the line of duty. Everybody threw it on the front burner and it didn't get done until last year, this year. So I back you up and to the town manager, thank you, as I've said, thank you for the work you're doing and look forward to serving you with you the next three years.
Excuse me, Mr. Gito, I know you're next in line, but I have a comment on the same, on the same topic.
I had already said I didn't have any comments.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gito.
You had asked me first.
Okay, great, thank you. So I too respectfully withdraw my evaluation because it did not really assess you correctly. I would have given you an above average, almost exceptional, above average overall rating. And it has to do with the operations of the town, everything that Mr. Cavey and Mr. McCrisky mentioned, but the budget, the operational budget, your innovation on how you developed the funding source for the fire station, the fire station location itself, all of that, the way you lead your staff. And it's evident that you are a great leader. And I wanted that evaluation to be, reflect that. The bond rating, the high bond rating that you maintained, how you continued with the sewer project, it's, I could go on and on. Now, with that said, there are still some things that you need to work on because you're only human, just like I'm only human. And that is the multi-year capital project plan. I know you have it developed, but it hasn't been presented, and a couple of other things. But the big ticket items are the ones that we mentioned earlier. So I wanted you to know that and I wanted that to. So I wanted you to know that and I wanted that to publicly go on the record. Yes, Mr. Carrara?
You guys that, um, did the evaluation for the town manager are gonna have to take a vote amongst yourselves to retract that because that has to do with the town manager's, um, contract. So you can't have that, I just don't want to have my stuff out there. You gotta take a formal vote to pull that back so it doesn't react on her contract that you dropped the ball on something, that you spent, I don't know how many meetings, looking at this and then all of a sudden we just realized we didn't put a high enough number in there. I think that's sad to the town manager. So you guys are gonna have to take a formal vote amongst yourselves, whoever took part in it, and then vote it back and either decide to do another evaluation to complete the town manager's contract maneuvers or you're gonna be negligent. And it gives her grounds to stand on something at a later date. Okay.
I totally agree. And so for that, I, I just ask that we put that on our next agenda. We won't build one tonight. Actually, I think we can, but maybe you just ratify it. But I think it's probably better just to put it on our next agenda and withdraw that.
Okay. We're all in agreement? Okay. Said it's done.
That's the formal part, but...
That's the formal.
Informally, I don't stand behind any of that.
All right. Okay. And I did have, on another note, I have two other comments. And one, and this is to my fellow, uh, select board members. One is I distributed an email to you, uh, several days ago and it's regarding the formation of the, um, three-year capital planning subcommittee. Uh, I worked with a team to develop that. It's only a draft. No action needs to be taken today. I just wanted you to be aware. Just in a nutshell, it is working. It's a joint, uh, capital project plan between the municipal and the school. Those two individual, uh, capital project plans are following the mass, their master plans. They've developed a capital plan. But what we need to do, have, um, subcommittee combine those prioritized though, under the leadership of Dr. Grimm and, uh, Dr. Robb. So it's nothing for us to do. Now I just wanted you to be aware that I did send that draft proposal. The second is I wanted you to be aware that I sent, um, a flyer to you. So I mentioned some, a couple of months ago, um, that we were gonna have a Stoughton Career Day. And now the Recreation Department and REMAP, that's Racial Equity Municipal Action Plan Core Team, have jointly, um, or planning to have a career day. I sent you the flyer. It will, please save the date. That's the most, because I want you to be involved in this, in the day. So it's Thursday, June 9th, from 3:00 PM to 6:00 PM. And, and for the most part, it'll be outside the Recreation Department. So please be on the lookout for that. Next is, next agenda item is town manager comments.
Uh, just quickly from Treasurer Paula Newt. The FY '22 fourth quarter real estate and personal property tax bills were mailed December 31st, due May 2nd, 2022. Postmark date is not acceptable. Payments must be received in the collector's office or at the lockbox in Medford on or above that date. And all unpaid first, second, and third quarter tax balances are subject to an interest rate of 14% from the first, second, and third quarters due date. A $15 demand fee will be paid to all unpaid real estate and personal property taxes. On another note, um, I'd like to remind everybody that Sean Petricka, our new veterans agent, is hosting his first, um, coffee hour for veterans at our Recreation Center on Friday morning. I believe it's at 9:00. And I just want, you, I basically say this for any veterans who might be listening, who may not be aware, Sean has asked us to assist him in any outreach that we can to try to get hold of veterans who may not know that the services are here, maybe necessarily uncomfortable coming to a town hall office and let people know this is an informal gathering that he's running for people who have served, just to get together and chat a little bit. Uh, 9:00, I believe, at Recreation, 9 to 11. And that's Friday morning. And, and if anybody wants to just go pop in and, and welcome and, and, uh, Sean has invited all. But, uh, particularly important is that he wants the word out to all of our veterans. So if you know veterans, if you, um, know of anybody who particularly is not aware that we even have veterans agents, there are people who, who don't even know when they come out that this resource is available to them, please pass the word along. On another note, uh, we received, we started to receive, um, notification of settlement money from the opioid funding. Uh, it's a 16-year payout on the funding, ranging in those years from $29,000 to $70,000 in any given year. Uh, we can sort of aggregate that amount out, let's $70,000 in the upfront year. So what I have done is I have put a team together. You guys know I like to put my mini-staff teams together. And I have the fire chief, the police chief, the recreation director, Janice, for her expertise in council on aging, and obviously is my public health person, Stephanie Patton, who's our abuse coordinator, and myself initially, to start to look at how we want to best use this money. Uh, it's to talk about resources that a town lacks. That is the spirit of what it's to be used for. And one of the things I don't want to do is overlap with the substance abuse prevention money that we currently have. We have great prevention programs. We work with the schools. We do our own individual work. Stephanie does phenomenal work with prevention. Uh, one of the areas that I feel that we do lack a bit is in, um, addiction and recovery resources. And this has become a problem in a lot of communities. People, um, OD. They get out of a hospital. We do follow-up. Our police department, fire department, they go knocking on doors the next day. We, Officer De Souza, in fact, is wonderful. He's one of the key people we use. And they go knocking on doors the next day and say to people, can we get you help? Can we get you help? Uh, we had applied for a grant to fund a position like that in the police department. We will still consider a, a grant for civilian position like that. But this is much broader. Uh, and we're looking at some type of a liaison area. We just had a brainstorming session, the first one last week, uh, earlier this week, yesterday, in fact, uh, a brainstorming session to talk about what type of liaison for recovery programs we could create. When COVID hit, Alcoholics Anonymous meetings shut down. Where did people go? What if people were coming out of a recovery plan and had to do a 90 and 90-day rehab stint? How would they do that when AA was not there? So someone who, somebody could call. Oh, Sean Petrick is also in that. Excuse me, that is a veterans agent because the opioid crisis is, is absolutely, uh, hitting veterans, particularly those who've had physical injuries and who are dealing with opioids. Um, we want to make sure, we've talked, you know, Chief Carroll's on there. He's a coach, a, a, a sports coach. We hear so much about young kids who get hurt. Good athletic kids who, who, parents might not even think of drug use because their kid is so focused on sport shit. That child gets hurt, prescribed something. And the next thing you know, they're an opioid addict. So what we're really looking at is not duplicating the prevention service, but looking at what we do to bolster that and then also work with, with people who are battling and outreach and also case management. So that's where we're kind of at. It's at a broad spectrum, but I just want to update the board, um, where we are at. There may still be even more funding coming. But if we can aggregate that amount out, there's likely enough that at least for 16 years, we could probably put a part-time position in that would be focused on, on recovery. And it wouldn't be just opioid recovery. That, that, that would be sort of, right now, because that's in the forefront. But, um, for, for recovery and, uh, long-term recovery programs. And, and again, they wouldn't be counseling, but a resource that the town could provide. Our town has wonderful resources, one of, what, only, I think, one of two with a VNA. And it would be really great for us to be a spearhead town on somebody who can provide those resources toward recovery programs. So that's where we're aiming to put the money. Uh, obviously, if it's a formal position, it's gonna go through the whole budgetary process next year and all of that. But, uh, we may try on a short term sooner rather than later with some small projects, purchased materials, uh, flyers, pamphlets, whatever else that might be appropriate, use that in the interim. But we will start looking to spend that money and I'll keep the board up to date on, on, uh, any further plans on that.
Yes, Mr. Carrara?
Dr. Grimm, does that include the school side too? Or is that just on our side?
This is town. And...
They have their own.
They do their own thing with, with that. And they do work with us on the substance abuse and prevention. But much of what we're seeing on the opioid is, um, it's post-high school. We have high school kids battling it, but it's elderly people. We see opioid addiction in 70-year-old peoples, 80-year-old people who've had hip replacements and have prescribed drugs. Veterans coming home, uh, veterans of all ages, we're seeing it with. And again, we want to broaden it out. It, it's not restricted to just opioid use. Cases, for instance, we had a, a very sad case of a homeless man who had an alcohol issue. And yes, it's detrimental to the town, excuse me, but he also was battling. And so what resources? We really just didn't have all the right resources. And most communities do not. And if we can use that money to sort of fill that hole a little bit, I think that that would be an appropriate use of the money. I mean, it's the settlement money. It should be used in the spirit of what the settlement was about.
Such a great cause, Dr. Grimm. That's the next, that's the other pandemic. Anyone else have a comment? Oh, yes, Mr. Gito.
Do we have any, uh, information on what other communities are doing with their money?
So the money was just released or has just been allocated in the past two or three weeks. So I have not heard how other communities are handling it at this point.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving to the next agenda item. It's after 8:00 PM, so I would say, to say that we can open our public hearing. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
Second.
Mr. Cavee, would you do the honors?
Yeah, I'm actually looking for it.
On the motion.
On the motion. Mr. Gito?
Yes.
Mr. Crisky?
Yes.
Mr. Cavee?
Yes.
And Mr. Carrara? Here. Mr. Carr? Yes?
Yes.
Unanimous decision. And I vote yes. Thank you.
Okay.
Perfect. Town of Stoughton, a notice of hearing. A public hearing will be held by the select board on April 12th, 2022 to consider the application of Vaizou Steakhouse for renewal of their common vicular license at 713 Washington Street. Stoughton, Massachusetts, 02072. Hearing to be held at 8:00 PM. The hearing will be conducted at the Great Hall, third floor, Town Hall, 10 Pearl Street, Stoughton, Massachusetts, and/or via Google Meets and broadcast via Stoughton Media Access Television and Livestream. Google Meets video link and telephone connection for public comment available by call to the selectman's office at 781-341-1300, extension 9212, or email d@stoughton-ma.gov. Buyer before 4:00 AM, uh, sorry, 4:00 PM on April 12th, 2022. Per order of Joseph M. McCrisky, Chairman, Select Board, acting as the local licensing authority. Thank you.
I'm sorry, is the owner or the manager? Mr. Kleber, right? Please step forward. Please have a seat. Just tell us a little bit about your restaurant.
Turn the, turn the mic on first.
Yeah, it's come nice, come move a little bit every day, every day. More people you know about what is over there. Let's move forward. Let's come.
I can't hear.
You hear it? All right. Can you hear it right now? Oh, sorry.
Use your outside voice.
Yeah.
No, that's, yeah, that's, uh, one of my mistakes because the last time that I got, uh, got the license, that's end December. And I think about it, that's a full year. And as soon as I watch over there, I thought, geez, man, that expired for only two weeks. Soon as I got the license, that's why the leave reapply again. Because I think about that's end this December, this year. That's why the application's delayed. And, uh, right now, the minute, as soon as I keep move, the minute it's people that's, so far, I have no complaint. The minute I'll, good review so far.
Yeah. So you have, uh, what type of cuisine? Brazilian cuisine?
Yes, Brazilian cuisine buffet, yeah.
And you're located on, uh, 713 Washington Street?
Yes.
Easy access to, yes. You want to tell us anything else about your menu?
Uh, I don't have a menu because that's most I have over there. That's cook every day, something different. Because most of our client right now, that's come every day. You know what I mean? It's, I personally don't like eat the same thing every day. That's why I make something different every day. The minute it's change a little bit. The way everyone still come every day to lunch and dinner.
Thank you so very much. Uh, so this is for a common vic renewal application. At, I, in case I mispronounce the name of the restaurant, Fiji U?
Feijao. Feijao.
Feijao.
Feijao.
Feijao. Steakhouse. So, um, Stoughton Police Department approved, Stoughton Fire Building, Board of Health, Treasurer, Water. So it was approved. You have, um, uh, three employees. And you have workers' compensation, insurance. And I think we're all set. Are there any questions from the board?
I have not any questions, but I do just wanted to say that I, I haven't gone to your restaurant yet. Uh, I remember you described the concept, which I thought was really fabulous. As I recall, uh, the profits go to, to a charity that you support. And, um, uh, besides the fact that, that, uh, you know, that really demonstrates, uh, your heart and where your heart's at, uh, for, for, for the community as a whole. I also hear the food's amazing. So, so, uh, I, I have been dying to get down there. And I, I think I've passed a sign over in Canton, a billboard. And, uh, I passed that just the other day and I was like, ah, I forgot. I've gotta go, I've gotta get to this place.
You can walk over here, that's across the street.
Yeah. It's right, it's right, right nearby. I just, uh, I apologize for that, but I, I will...
Thank you.
Commit to being there, uh, next week, I promise. And, uh, I'm looking forward to it.
Thank you. Jose, he's used to go over there almost every week.
Every week? I think it's a little more than that. I, I will take that opportunity. Mr. Cavee, I'll pay. Anybody that wants to join us, it's, uh, it's well worth it.
You better jump on board. I've never heard that before.
You should talk. You should talk.
You taught me.
Hey, hey, at least I make the offer publicly. You don't even make it one-on-one.
Oh, I make it publicly. It's just, it's not on the mic.
No, I, I've been there more than several times. And, um, it, the variety of meats, I mean, everything is cooked to perfection. It's just very good. So I want one of those little, you know, every 10 meals, you get a free one or something like that. It's gotta be some, I mean, you know... I'll tell you, the charities are making a lot of money on my back, that's for sure. Thank you, though.
Thank you.
Any other board comments?
The only thing I'd, I'd add, Deborah, is that, um, it's located at 713 Washington Street. He has indoor seating of six tables. There are two bathrooms, one for women, one for, uh, men. He has, uh, no, no counter seating. He has a total of 24 seats. And his, uh, hours of operation are 11:00 AM to 9:00 PM. So I guess there's plenty of time to get in there and do what you gotta do.
No, I got the skills, no.
Any public?
I, uh, I've also been at your place and enjoyed it. Thank you very much.
Any other board comments? Okay. Any public comments? I see none.
Motion to close.
Motion to close the hearing. Second.
All in favor? Mr. Gito?
Aye.
Mr. McCrisky, Mr. Cavee, Mr. Carrara?
Aye.
And I vote yes.
Motion approved. Second. Aye.
Mr. Gito, Mr., we're just gonna do the, the round robin.
The approval, right, yeah.
The approval.
Aye.
Cavy?
Aye.
And I vote yes. Oh, okay. And that was the motion to approve the Common Vic license, the renewal application.
It was a second from somebody, I'm sure.
There was, yes, Mr. Carrera. All right. Thank you, Mr.
Thanks so much.
Kleber, good luck. We'll be there. I'll see you. Okay, let's go to the next item, please, the consent agenda, or any items that we want to pull from the consent agenda.
Yes, Chairwoman Roberts, if we could approve item B, we're still working on that application. I just want to make sure everything is accurate.
Thank you. Any others?
I'd like, I made a, I sent something around on the item G, the open session meeting. So I don't know if we need to pull that in order to be able to to deal with a couple of changes in the in the minutes. Okay.
Okay. You've made the necessary. Okay, so, Mr. Jito, did you get a chance to see those corrections, those amendments?
I'm sure that that she made the right corrections.
All right. So.
They weren't major, I'll tell you.
And I'd like to discuss item C.
We're pulling item C.
And item B.
And item B.
And we're modifying item G.
With the necessary amendment.
Right.
Can I get a motion to accept?
Why don't we talk about the other one and vote the whole consent agenda together?
So, Mr. McChrisky, you wanted to pull item?
Yes, if I could have the applicant come forward, Stoughton Youth Baseball, on the one-day beer and wine application.
Ken, pull that real close to you. Yeah, make sure it's on. There you go.
There we go.
So I just wanted to ask about, you know, in a little bit more detail.
Sure.
I'm not going to lie to you. I'm very, very skittish to be voting any kind of an alcohol license at a youth sports event. I just think that has the potential to blow up. But if you could tell me what it is, is this a one-shot deal, or is this, you know, just give me some background.
Yeah, so it's a one-shot deal. What we're looking for is a fundraising event. So we're looking to bring basically anyone that's familiar with the Stoughton Youth Baseball complex, bring a cornhole tournament to the complex. We've got the spacing in the room, basically inside the complex, to just hold just a tournament as a fundraiser, to bring just revenue to our league, right? Stoughton Youth Baseball is not funded by the town. We're all fundraising to keep these fields maintained and kids playing baseball. So we look for fundraising opportunities to kind of help us bring in that revenue so we can keep these fields the way that they are. So we're looking for a cornhole tournament for a one-day, five-hour, basically, span of time for the event.
All right, Ken, I'm sorry, I should have yielded to the chair, but would you just identify yourself?
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Ken Arbut. I am the Stoughton Youth Baseball President, here in town.
So now, there are going to be kids, will there be kids at this event as well?
There will be kids at a different location. So again, we have a large complex. So the main attraction is going to be on what we call golf field. So that's when you first come into the complex. It's closer to the concession stand, so that way it's monitored and kind of controlled. And the kids will be off at one of the backfields away from all of this. So they'll be separated, but there will be kids there.
Okay, but you understand my concern?
Absolutely.
You know, and this has been sitting out here for a while. So, I mean, I would probably
I understand the, I understand the concern.
Support this one, but this will be the only one I'll be voting for. I just have a real problem. I hope you have people in play in place that are going to watch the
Yep, and we're also, I believe, I'm sorry.
I mean, somebody that's going to be there that's tip certified.
Yep.
And that there's somebody there that is watching the condition of people there. I just, like I said, I it's only I'm only going to vote one. I think I don't know how my colleagues will vote, but I just don't want to see alcohol. I just have this fear, you know, and somebody brings their kid to a game, and game goes long, and somebody has one or too many beers, and then they're driving their son or daughter home, you know, and I just, for a fundraiser, one-shot deal, you know, I'd say I'd vote for it tonight, but that's the only time I'll vote for.
And I do know that there are other cornhole tournaments that have taken place in Stoughton with basically the same thing. There was one at Cedar Hall or Cedar Hill Golf Course.
Yeah.
That took place.
Right, but that's also, that's a separate place. And again,
Understood.
You know, that clubhouse, and I would say the same thing, but that clubhouse has a full license. But you're a youth sports organization, and you're leasing town property that was intended for youth baseball, not for fundraisers.
Understood.
So that's, you know, again, I applaud the job you're doing. You run a great program for the kids. I know that. I know the struggles. I've done a lot of volunteer work over the years. You know, I've kept a fire truck, antique fire truck, running with a lot of money out of my pocket, because it just, it's tough to get the money, especially, you know, with COVID. It's a whole different world. So my heart goes out to you, but I hope you can understand my position.
I do.
Thank you. And again, thank you for all the good work you do for the kids in town.
And to answer your questions, yes, we do have tip certified, too. We'll be there.
Great.
We'll also work with the police department as well, you know, for some sort of details to also make sure that there's other people besides board members.
Okay, you do have a detail that's going to be there?
We're going to work with the police department.
Okay, okay.
First, we wanted to go through this process and then work with the chief.
Well, I mean, that's, I mean, I'm glad you're saying that, because we just could put that as a stipulation. But if I have your word, you're going to work with the police department. That's good.
We're open to that, absolutely.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments, Mr. McChrisky?
We also, I mean, I'm sorry, we want it to be safe for the town, too.
Oh, I know you do. I know you do. Like I said, there's no thing, it's just that, you know, every once in a while, it doesn't happen often, there's just some things when you're sitting here that you have a real hard time with, you know. And it's difficult because my, you know, my heart goes out to you. I know what it's like to volunteer. I know what it's like to raise money, you know, and sometimes you just, there's nothing else. You got to come up with something different. But, you know, I'm glad, at least you understand my position, that's all. Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you.
Anything else, Mr. McChrisky, on that?
I'm good.
Okay. Mr. Carrera?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. These are always a tough thing to deal with, because I remember once they sort of talked about this. They were going to run like, I don't know how they were going to do it. It was going to be like a casino night somehow at the baseball place, and then they wanted to have liquor. And I know the neighbors aren't happy with that. And this is on our consent agenda, which isn't kind of like mainframe to the people at home. It's mainframe to us because we know it's there. I don't see, there should have been a layout given to us of how you were going to handle the traffic in, especially where you're going to be holding the liquor stuff. Question that Mr. McChrisky asked was, I was going to ask, who's going to handle the liquor? Who's going to watch the liquor? How many details? And I'll tell you right now, I would make it a stipulation. I know Mr. McChrisky didn't. I'd make it a stipulation that there will be details there. Joe, do you remember when they brought Saka before us? They were going to have a big the big whoop up there, and IKEA was involved, and?
Right, right. Yeah, they did the same thing, yeah.
And there was, you know, there's incidents that always occur. That's what we got to worry about. I worry about the neighbors there, because when that complex went in, and I know when that went in, because my father was the first machine through to do the golf in the whole day. And I've worked for Dennis Gator, who was probably one of the greatest guys down there, and I worked for Zero down there to keep those fields. So I know what it takes. I didn't take anything. I just did it because Dennis Gator was the guy I respected. But I'm kind of hung up on the liquor stuff. Baseball's baseball, little kids. Now we're starting to get outside the box a little bit. Nothing against you, Kenny. I know who you are. I know I know your family well. You went to school with probably my brother Brian.
Patrick.
Patrick. He's even younger than I thought. Sherry went to school with Brian. But some things don't mix. Some things you got to keep separate. I don't, I don't know. I don't want to offend anybody. I know you want to, what happened to selling chocolate bars and stuff like that, standing in front of Papaginos and, you know, I know that's not the way, but I'm a little, little torn on this. You know what I mean? If I had a good layout, and I knew what was going on, and there were names of the people that were going to be there responsible, because they're responsible. Something happens, what's our recourse? We don't give them another one. But, you know, 10 people got arrested, and there was a fight, God forbid. I'm not saying there will be, but it's just, fiestas run very well. We know how they run. I just don't know how you mix baseball and beer unless it's at the Red Sox Stadium. They kind of cut it down to a science. So that's where I am. That's my thoughts to you people, and I just thought.
I just wanted to let Scott know, too, that I got a text from a resident while I'm sitting here, asking me to not vote for it. And I think there's, again, there was a misconception. I thought this as well was going to be a full-time liquor license, and there was no way I'm going to vote for that. To Ken's credit, they were going there on the issue of lights that we'll be dealing with as well, you know, on the fields. I got several calls, and we spoke, Ken, we spoke about this, that he believed there was a couple neighbors, and I knew there was a couple more from different ends of the town. I asked him to please take the larger step to notify the whole street about, you know, the needs, what they were bringing up. And he did. To his credit, he sent letters to everybody on Elm Street in that vicinity.
Elm School and West.
School and West, too. Okay, I didn't know you did it West, too.
Whole circle.
Okay, so the whole area around. So that's larger than I thought, you know, but I would have been happy with Elm Street alone.
In Young Way.
And what did you have, three people show up?
Mm-hmm.
Three people. So it's obvious people will make calls, and they want you to know their feelings and that so forth. But they didn't have, they didn't take the opportunity to be at the meeting. So I just want to make sure he gets credit for that, you know, that he's taken the extra steps here. I'm okay with one, knowing that it's one. It relieves me. Have you ever thought of a home run derby in town?
We do that on our jamboree day.
Okay, all right. Because I've seen them done as fundraisers, and they go crazy in other towns. When I ran the events committee here,
Yeah.
We had one all set up, but then Sharon did one, so we couldn't really.
That becomes more of a liability with people getting hurt hitting baseballs, but.
Yeah, yeah. So, but no, it's just a thought.
Windshields and everything else that gets smashed.
Yeah, unless you're a windshield.
We can do another round robin, but I wanted to make sure I touch base with Mr. Jito. Did you have any comments or questions that you wanted to express?
My comment is, I hope you do well. I hope everything works out fine. Hope you make a lot of money, because you'd have to do an awful lot of work down there to to make that complex work. And good luck to you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jito. How about you, Mr. Cavy?
Yeah, I have a couple of comments. For the, you've gone through all the various steps. The approvals themselves come from people, you know, the police department, the fire department, buildings, treasury, water, all people I have really tremendous faith in, but also tremendous respect for. All of them have supporting this, right? And so it's not that I only take their word for it. Ultimately, the accountability comes from us. However, with with them supporting this license, I personally feel comfortable supporting it as well. Though you and I don't know each other other than through some of these meetings, you know, the work that you've done over many, many years, I definitely appreciate. I know other people on the on the board who I also have tremendous respect for. I do have a lot of faith, obviously, if if things go wrong, like, it probably won't ever happen again. But but if it's, you know, if there's a group of people who can do it right, I really do have faith that you'll be able to. And coming up with creative fundraising really is part of fundraising, and I hope this this works out well for you, that everyone has a, you know, wonderful, fun day. And obviously, the detail, I think, will also help you guys. Stoughton Police Department, as you know, they're accustomed to this, and they do a great job.
Absolutely.
So so I believe that we're going to be all just fine, and I support this one-day alcohol license, and I wish you the best.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cavy. I do have a question and a comment. Is this your first time having alcoholic beverages at your event?
Since I have been part of Stoughton Youth Baseball at the complex, yes. We've had other fundraisers at the golf course and things like that that we've had in the past. But at the complex, since I've been part of Stoughton Youth Baseball, yes.
So this is, the other, the other item on the application that I received, it was a statement that the Board of Health annual inspection to be conducted this morning. And then I do have an answer to that. Thank you, Deborah.
I was going to say, I have it, too.
And it says, both inspection performed on April 12 yielded no violations and therefore satisfactory inspection. So they, the Board of Health, did give you that approval. So with that said, Board, do you wish to have another round of questioning, or are you still on the fence or motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor, Mr. Jito?
Yes.
Mr. Oh, sorry.
Through you, Madam Chairman, to the maker of the motion. Can we put a friendly amendment in there, Lou, that we get the names of everybody that's tip certified and all that on a separate piece of paper, the people in charge, you know, your top dogs, just so that it's on record that there's that people that are that are watching this, controlling it?
I accept that.
Thank you.
And was Mr. Cavy that seconded his motion, or?
Yeah, I did.
Did you accept that amended?
It's no harm in it, so long, I'm sure you guys were able to produce that without a problem, so.
I don't have a problem with it.
I accept it.
So, as I recall, Mr. Jito said yes. Mr. McChrisky?
Yes.
Mr. Carrera?
Yes.
And Mr. Cavy?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Thank you very much for the time.
Good luck and be safe.
Thank you.
Motion to approve consent agenda items A, D, E, F, and G.
And G?
G as amended.
And G as amended.
G with amendments.
Yeah.
G with amendments. All in favor, Mr. Jito?
Yes.
Mr. McChrisky?
Yes.
Mr. Carrera?
Yes.
Mr. Cavy?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Is there anything else of urgent matter that's not on the agenda we should discuss?
Supper.
Okay, so in that case, I will accept Mr. Jito's motion to adjourn. Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, Mr. Jito?
Yes.
Mr. McChrisky?
Yes.
Mr. Cavy?
Yes.
Mr. Carrera?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Everyone, have a good evening, and we will see you next time. Thank you.